I'd like to call the commission, planning commission meetings for the month of November to order, call on Commissioner Crekmore for the invocation.
Thank you. Let us pray. Heavenly Father, we come to you today to ask for your guidance, wisdom, and support. As we begin this meeting, we ask that you will be in our midst. Help us to engage in meaningful discussion. Allow us to continue to grow closer as a group and nurture the bonds of community. Fill us with your grace to make appropriate decisions that will affect our city. Help us to be able to review the matters at hand in a reasonable and thoughtful way. During this season, let us stop and give thanks for the many blessings you have bestowed upon us. Guide us as we work for the city to accomplish our goals this day. Amen.
Amen.
Thank you, Commissioner. Mr. Goomis, will you call the roll, please?
Commissioner Crekmore.
Here.
Commissioner Eberwine.
Here.
Commissioner Edwards.
Here.
Commissioner Goodman.
Here.
Commissioner Staler.
Here.
Commissioner Rector.
Here.
Chairman Singleton.
Here.
Have a quorum, sir.
Thank you, sir. Are there any corrections to the minutes for the month of October? If not, they would stand approved as printed, corrected. Today, we have four items for the public hearing. The public hearings are for 30 minutes, 10 minutes for the proponents, 15 minutes for the opponents, five minutes for rebuttal. Make a note that this meeting is videotaped and televised for public viewing. The first item on our agenda today is conditional use permit request, CUP 2021-020, Hozier Road Scrap Metal Processing Yard. Mr. Goomis, will you read the caption, please?
My pleasure. Conditional use permit request, CUP 2021-020, Hozier Road Scrap Metal Processing Yard, submitted by Kristi Perry, applicant on behalf of SMM Southeast LLC, property owner, in accordance with Sections 31306 and 31406 of the Unified Development Ordinance, to grant a conditional use permit to establish a junkyard, salvage yard, recycling center, and transfer station on property located at 1177 Hozier Road, zoning map 44 parcel 126C. The affected area is further identified as being located in the Cypress Voting Borough, zoned M2 General Industrial Zoning District. The 2035 Comprehensive Plan designates this area as part of the Rural Agricultural Use District. When you act on this request, you will be acting on a resolution to present a report and recommendation to City Council relating to conditional use permit, CUP 2021-020. And Alexis Baker will provide the staff report, sir.
Good afternoon, Chairman and Planning Commissioners. As mentioned, the conditional use request is, let's see if I can get this to work. There we go. As mentioned, this conditional use permit request is to establish a junkyard, salvage yard, recycling center, and transfer station on property located at 1177 Hozier Road. The property is located in the Rural Agricultural Use District and is located in the Cypress Voting Borough. The subject property is in the M2 Heavy Industrial Zoning District. Two metal buildings, a two-story office building, a metal rail, and impervious surfaces comprised of asphalt and concrete exist on the property. To the north is the M2 Heavy Industrial Zoning District with vacant land. To the south is M2 Heavy Industrial Zoning District with vacant land and forested land. To the east is an agricultural zoning district with single-family residential uses. And to the west is M2 Heavy Industrial Zoning District with vacant land and a utility easement. A previous conditional use permit, C2304, for a recycling transfer facility expired due to disuse under Section 31-306F5, where any conditional use is discontinued for any reason for a continuous period of two years or more, the conditional use permit shall terminate and become null and void upon notice to the applicant. A use shall be deemed to have been discontinued when the use shall have ceased for any reason regardless of the intent of the owner or occupier of the property to reinstate the use at some later date. The approval of new conditional use permit shall be required prior to any subsequent reinstatement of the use. Furthermore, the current owner failed to renew the annual license to operate a scrap metal processing yard, which was a required condition under the conditional use permit, C2304, and is outlined in the code of the city of Suffolk. The applicant will not make any changes to the existing building or impervious surfaces other than repairing buildings in broken asphalt and concrete as needed. The site is currently served by private water and sewer. An existing driveway is on Hozier Road, which traffic engineering has expressed no concerns regarding the parking, circulation, or traffic for these uses. The proposed uses were evaluated under the Unified Development Ordinance for compliance with conditional use permit approval criteria. No concerns were expressed by staff. The proposed uses are approximately located, are appropriately located within the M2 Heavy Industrial Zoning District, approximately 500 feet from the Suffolk Executive Airport. The current owner is in good standing with the Department of Environmental Quality. And as conditions of approval, there will be the inclusion of pre-treating stormwater runoff to eliminate contaminants from residual vehicle fluids entering into the groundwater and soil. And also, a spill response plan will be provided the city, as well as the onsite wells will be tested semi-annually for any contaminants. Additionally, the applicant will be required to maintain the existing 25-foot landscape buffer to the north, 30-foot landscape buffer to the south, a 40-foot landscape buffer to the east, and the 30-foot landscape buffer to the west. Farms also exist around the entirety of the property. The applicant will maintain a six-foot chain link fence wrapped with tarp canvas along all property lines. The applicant has also acknowledged that additional landscaping may be required at the time of zoning approval, and that is also included as a condition for this conditional use permit request. It is staff's opinion that the site in question is appropriate for the proposed uses given, the existing and future infrastructure for the proposed use and its location, nor will the use adversely impact the surrounding neighborhood. Therefore, staff recommends approval of conditional use permit, CUP 2021-020, with the conditions as outlined in staff's report. This concludes my report, and I will stand by for any questions after the public hearing. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Baker. As I said before, this meeting is videotaped and televised for public viewing, and the public hearing is for 30 minutes, 10 minutes for the proponents, 15 minutes for the opponents, and five minutes for rebuttal. Who would like to come forward to present this option? Come forward, sir.
Good evening. My name is Mark Perry. Do I need to state my address?
Yes.
2000 Poketown Creek Lane, Chesapeake, Virginia. Just here to represent the Salvage Recycling Center. We've been in business for over 30 years, a family business, and we really, really love this location. It's perfect. It's all indoors for us. It's probably the most environmentally friendly salvage recycling center in Hampton Roads. And if anybody has any questions for us, I would love to answer them. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Is anyone else who'd like to speak in favor of this request? Is anyone in speaking opposition? I have a close to public hearing. Commissioners, questions, comments, or motion?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to move to approve CUP 2021-020 with conditions.
Crekmore, that's the motion for approval from Commissioner Crekmore.
Second.
Second from Kidroll Eberwine. Any question or comments on the motion? Mr. Goomis, will you call the roll, please?
Commissioner Crekmore.
Yes.
Commissioner Eberwine.
Yes.
Commissioner Edwards.
Yes.
Commissioner Goodman.
Yes.
Commissioner Staler.
Yes.
Commissioner Rector.
Yes.
Chairman Singleton.
Yes.
Motion passes by a vote of seven to zero.
Congratulations. It should be going to City Council on December 15th with approval from this commission. Thank you. The next item on our agenda is the conditional use permit request, CUP 2021-021, Quality Tire and Auto Care LLC. Mr. Goomis, will you read the caption, please?
Conditional use permit request, CUP 2021-021, Quality Tire and Auto Care LLC, submitted by William Goodman, Quality Tires and Auto Care LLC, applicant on behalf of Nicholas Moyer, property owner, in accordance with Sections 31306 and 31406 of the Unified Development Ordinance, to grant a conditional use permit to establish an automobile repair, minor, and car wash on property located at 351 North Main Street, zoning map 34G11 (A), parcel 87. The affected area is further identified as being located in the Suffolk Voting Borough, zoned CBD, Central Business District, zoning district, and HC, Historic Conservation Overlay District. The 2035 Comprehensive Plan designates this area as part of the Central Growth Area Mixed Use Core District. When you act on this request, you will be acting on a resolution to present a report and recommendation to City Council relating to conditional use permit, CUP 2021-021. And Brittany Collier will provide staff report, sir.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman and members of the Planning Commission. As stated, this CUP is to establish a minor automobile repair use and car wash on property located at 351 North Main Street. The property is located within the Historic District and zoned CBD, Central Business District. The property is surrounded by CBD Central Business District, which has a mixed use of different commercial uses such as retail store, restaurants, and office spaces, as well as RU, Residential Urban, to the west of the parcel. In August of this year, a notice of violation was received by the property owner regarding the repair and replacement of tire operations taking place. The property owner was informed of the requirement for a conditional use permit for this use and subsequently submitted one in an effort to come into compliance. The proposed use will utilize an existing one-story commercial building, which consists of an office space and attached storage area and service bay. No expansion or changes to the existing building are proposed as a part of this request. The car wash currently operates as a conforming use within the CBD and has operated successfully in this location for many years. The proposed use of minor automobile repair would be considered a change in use that is permitted only with the approval of a conditional use permit in the CBD. The applicant is proposing to establish a minor automobile repair use and car wash in order to allow for the washing and detailing of cars, as well as the installation, repair, sales, and storage of tires. The tires associated with the proposed use would be stored inside at all times, and no more than 100 tires would be stored at a given time. All tires needing to be discarded would remain inside and disposed of during a weekly or biweekly run to the local landfill disposal site. Currently, inside and outside car detailing is provided in the front parking lot area of the parcel. The business will continue to utilize the front parking area to wash and detail cars. Any vehicle that requires tire services will be required to be serviced within the existing Bay Area. Staff has placed a condition that will limit tire services to the Bay Area only. Additionally, staff has placed a condition that will limit the minor automobile repair use to tire service only. No other services shall be provided other than the already established car wash and detailing service. There is adequate onsite parking located in the rear of the property, as well as on-street parking, which is permitted in the CBD district. Additionally, there is adequate area in the front parking area to allow for two rows of cars consisting of two cars each without obstructing any traffic. Staff has placed a condition that on-street parking shall be limited to employees only, and all cars to be serviced or waiting pickup shall be parked in the existing rear parking lot in order to ensure that there is parking available for the residents along Mayhame Street. The Department of Public Works Traffic Engineering has reviewed the request and is in support of the proposal, provided that a condition requiring all customer parking be located onsite and that on-street parking be limited to employees only. A conditional use permit recognized as uses that because of their unique characteristics or potential impacts on adjacent land uses are not generally permitted in certain zoning districts as a matter of right. Rather, such uses are permitted through the approval of a CUP when the right of circumstances and conditions are found acceptable. I will touch on a few of those, however, they are all outlined in staff's report. The proposed conditional use shall be in compliance with all regulations of the applicable zoning district. The car wash currently operates as a conforming use within the CBD. The proposed use of minor automobile repair to allow for tire services would represent a change in use of the property. Therefore, a building permit review and approval, as well as the issuance of a new certificate of occupancy, will be required before commencement of the use. The applicant will be required to comply with the 2012 Virginia Statewide Fire Prevention Code, as well as building code. In addition, this property is located within the Historic Conservation Overlay District and is subject to the requirements of the Historic District Design Guidelines. Therefore, any exterior changes to the property require certificate appropriateness. The proposed conditional use shall conform to the character of the neighborhood within the same zoning district in which it is located. The proposed use will utilize the existing one-story commercial building located in established commercial area within the downtown core of the city of Suffolk. The property is surrounded by CBD Central Business District, which is a mix of different uses of commercial. The existing car wash use has operated successfully in this location for many years, and the inclusion of the tire service use on the site further solidifies the site as an auto-oriented site. The proposed use shall not be noxious or offensive by reason of vibration, noise, odor, dust, smoke, or gas. The current hours of operation are Monday through Saturday from 8:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. Staff has placed a condition that will limit the minor automobile repair use to tire service only. No other services shall be provided. It is important to note that the tire service can generate noise by means of tire installation and removal through the use of a compact drill. While it is acknowledged that the tire service use will generate noise through these means, it is important to note that the existing car wash use, which has operated onsite without incident for many years, generates noise through the use of commercial vacuums. The proposed tire service noise should be no more frequent or impactful than noise generated on the site currently from the existing car wash use. Staff has placed a condition that will require the maintenance of an existing fence, as well as the construction of a new fence along the property line in order to provide screening from the surrounding uses. Additionally, staff has also placed a condition that no storage of equipment or tires shall be located outside of the existing building. The number of tires stored at a given time shall not exceed 100 tires, and the tires should be discarded, must be stored inside and disposed of properly. Staff believes that this request with the recommended condition shall not be noxious or offensive by reason of odor, dust, smoke, or gas. Staff finds that the proposed use of a minor automobile repair and car wash meets the criteria for conditional use permits as set forth in Section 31-306 of the Unified Development Ordinance, and that the use should not negatively impact the surrounding area with conditions that would serve to mitigate potential adverse impacts. Accordingly, staff recommends approval of CUP 2021-021 with the conditions as noted in staff's report and the attached resolution. This concludes my presentation. I'm available for any questions after the public hearing.
Thank you, Ms. Collier. We now open the public hearing. Does anyone here who'd like to come forward and speak in favor of this request?
My name is William Goodman. I'm of 909 Barbara Drive, Suffolk, Virginia. And I've been raised here, and my entire life, we've been working on cars and washing cars at another location we have on East Washington, and we would just like to be able to provide a new tire service for our customers on Main Street. And if there's any questions or anything, I would like to, you know, be able to provide.
We'll save the question until after we close the public hearing, sir.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Goodman.
All right, thank you.
Is anyone here who'd like to speak in opposition? Mr. Goodman, do you have any other additional comments you want us to hear?
No, that's it.
Okay, thank you very much. This conclude the public hearing on this item. Commissioners, questions, comments, or motion?
Mr. Chairman, I'd move the approval of CUP 2021-021 with conditions.
Have a motion for approval?
Second motion.
Have a second, Mr. Edwards. Mr. Goodman, will you, any question on the motion, please? Mr. Goodman, Goomis, will you call the roll, please?
Commissioner Crekmore.
Yes.
Commissioner Eberwine. Commissioner Edwards.
Yes.
Commissioner Goodman.
Yes.
Commissioner Staler.
Yes.
Commissioner Rector.
Yes.
Commissioners, our Chairman Singleton.
Yes.
Motion passes, sir, with a vote of six to one, with Commissioner Eberwine voting in opposition.
Thank you, Ms. Goodman. Congratulations, Mr. Goodman. You have approval from this commission and it'll be going to City Council on December The next item on our agenda is exception request, CEX 2021-011, that's 109 Riverside Drive. Mr. Goomis, will you read the caption, please?
Exception request, CEX 2021-011, 109 Riverside Drive, submitted by Darrell Jesse, applicant and property owner, in accordance with Section 31415 of the Unified Development Ordinance, to grant an exception to the Development Criteria on Buffer Area Regulations of the Chesapeake Bay Preservation Area to permit the expansion of the principal dwelling and the placement of various accessory structures, including decks, pools, patio, and gazebo, to encroach into the 100-foot Resource Protection Area Buffer on property located at 109 Riverside Drive, zoning map 5D (1), parcel 120. The affected area is further identified as being located in the Sleepy Hole Voting Borough, zoned RL, Residential Low Density Zoning District. The 2035 Comprehensive Plan designates this area as part of the Northern Growth Area Enering Suburban Use District. When you act on this request, you will be acting on a resolution for a Chesapeake Bay Preservation Area Exception Request, CEX 2021-011. And Grace Brazil will provide the staff report.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Chairman and Planning Commissioners. As stated, this CBPA Exception Request is to permit an attached addition to the primary dwelling and to replace an existing deck with a pool, gazebo, and stone terrace to encroach into the 100-foot Resource Protection Area Buffer on property located at 109 Riverside The property is zoned RL, Residential Low Zoning District, and is surrounded by residential properties zoned RL. The property is a part of Bennett's Creek Landing subdivision and abuts up to the Nansman River, which is subject to the 100-foot RPA Buffer. The Bennett's Creek Landing subdivision was approved in 1987, which was two years prior to the adoption of the Chesapeake Bay Preservation Area Act. The rear of the property has a maintained grass yard and is supported with a retaining wall and a bulkhead. This was the exhibit that was provided by the applicant. It is the site plan as well as the buffer restoration. I do have a zoomed-in version, so the exhibit before you is the current conditions of the property. As you can tell, the residential structure is located almost entirely within the 100-foot RPA Buffer. I don't know if you guys can see this. So approximately right here, so this is the deck area where the proposed pool and gazebo will be placed, and then you can kind of see right here is where the existing concrete drive that encroaches within the buffer. The addition will be placed approximately right here. Due to the age of the lot and the placement of the home, placement of any improvements outside of the 100-foot RPA Buffer are limited. So this is the exhibit that shows the proposed improvements. So the existing attached deck will be replaced with a pool, a gazebo, and a stone terrace. The proposed pool and gazebo and stone terrace will be constructed a little bit beyond the existing deck footprint, so the stone terrace will expand toward the side property line to the east. The attached addition will be 821 square feet in size and will be constructed over a portion of the existing concrete driveway. All proposed improvements will be located within the 50-foot landward portion of the 100-foot RPA Buffer, and no improvements or land disturbance is proposed within the 50-foot seaward portion of the buffer area. The total land disturbance within the RPA that's associated with the improvements is 1,127 square feet. And since these proposed improvements will be constructed over existing impervious cover, the total net increase in impervious area is 896 square feet. To mitigate for the proposed total land disturbance associated with the improvement area, applicant is proposing to replace a total of three units of vegetation back within the buffer area. The vegetation proposed is consistent with the Riparian Buffers Modification and Mitigation Manual. In accordance with Section 31-415 of the UDO, an exception may be granted with conditions and safeguards as deemed necessary to further the purpose and intent of the overlay district. Due to the age of the lot, as well as the placement of the home in relation to the buffer area, it has made it difficult to construct any improvements outside of the buffer area. The only area outside of the RPA Buffer is the front yard, where due to locational standards for accessory structures would not be permitted in accordance with regulations outlined within the UDO. No other location would be practical due to the limiting factors of the site. In that regard, there does not appear to be an alternative location for the pool, gazebo, stone terrace, as well as the attached addition outside the RPA Buffer. Additionally, the applicant has attempted to limit impact to the buffer area by placing improvements in areas where there is existing structures and impervious area, as well as mitigated for the total land disturbance. Staff believes this request does not confer upon the applicant any special privileges and is not based upon conditions that are self-created, since the subject property has limitations due to the age of the law and the placement of the residential structure. Additionally, the applicant has attempted to limit overall impact to the buffer area, and as stated again, and is mitigating all impacts. Additionally, as presented and proposed, the applicant has designed the proposed improvements in a manner that they represent the minimal encroachment that is necessary to afford relief. Staff finds that the applicant's request does satisfy the criteria outlined in Section 31415 of the UDO to grant an exception to the requirements of the Chesapeake Bay Preservation Area Overlay District. As such, staff recommends approval of exception request, CEX 2021-011, with conditions outlined in staff's report and the attached resolution. That concludes my presentation. I'm happy to answer any questions you guys may have following the public hearing. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Brazil. We're now open to public hearing. Who would like to come forward to speak in favor of this item?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, thank you for your time. My name is Darrell Jesse. I reside at 109 Riverside Drive, and I am the applicant. As Ms. Brazil has shared, we spent quite a bit of time working through with the architect and the contractor to minimize the impact by putting all of the renovations and additions over top of existing impervious area to the extent feasible. And as shared, since the home was constructed over 30 years ago, inside the landward buffer options were very, very limited to provide for senior living on the first floor, which is what's driving the addition to the left, and upgrading the deck and patio that are currently existing on the right of the home. I appreciate the planning department's assistance to a novice going through this process, and I appreciate this commission's efforts to make sure we can continue to develop our community in a responsible way. And if I'll be available, should there be any questions? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Jesse. Is anyone else to speak in favor of this request? Is anyone in opposition to this request? Seeing none, I'd like to close the public hearing. Commissioners, question, comments, or motion?
I make a motion for approval of CEX 2021-011.
Motion for approval, Ms. Eberwine.
Second.
Crekmore with second. Discussion on the motion?
I presume that's with conditions.
Yeah, with conditions.
Yes.
Goodman, you call the roll, please.
Commissioner Creekmore?
Yes.
Commissioner Eberwine?
Yes.
Commissioner Edwards?
Yes.
Commissioner Goodman?
Yes.
Commissioner Staler?
Yes.
Commissioner Rector?
Yes.
Chairman Singleton?
Yes.
Motion passes, sir, by a vote of seven to zero.
Thank you. Congratulations, Mr. Jesse. There be no further action with City Council with your proper permitting. You're ready to go to work.
Thank you, sir.
Congratulations again.
Thank you.
The next item on our public hearing today is an ordinance text amendment OTA twenty twenty-one dash zero zero two, Adequate Public Facility. Mr. Goodman, will you read the caption, please?
Ordinance text amendment OTA twenty twenty-one dash zero zero two, Adequate Public Facilities initiated by the City of Suffolk for amendments to the Code of the City of Suffolk, Chapter thirty-one, Unified Development Ordinance, Article six, Design and Improvement Standards, Section thirty-one, six oh one, Adequate Public Facilities. The purpose of this text amendment is to update and refine the Code of the City of Suffolk, Chapter thirty-one, Unified Development Ordinance, due to a change in circumstances. When you act on this request, you will be acting on a resolution to present a report and recommendation to City Council relating to OTA twenty twenty-one dash zero zero two, and Kevin Wine will provide the staff report.
Thank you, Mr. Goodman. Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, Vice Chairman, members of the Planning Commission. I'll be providing you an overview of this amendment, an amendment that the Committee on Ordinances spent some time with, and what it entails, along with an overview of some of the more important procedural changes that will be implemented by staff moving forward as it pertains to the city's Adequate Public Facilities provisions, specifically as they relate to school generation and its impacts stemming from new and proposed development. These modifications to the UDO have been in the making for some time and are made with the benefit of the findings of a School Facilities Needs Assessment and Attendance Zone Plan, which was commissioned through a consultant by the city. The, this section was most recently amended in May of twenty eighteen, which introduced various methods of calculating school generation rates, of which this amendment will further modify. The amendment before you today would do two things. One, it would modify the generation rates utilized to calculate impacts from proposed development. And two, revises the city's acceptable levels of service related to determining whether schools have adequate capacity to absorb students generated from said development. Here is a table representative of the first change I noted. Here on the left side of the table, you have the city's existing generation rates used for calculating impacts developments will have in regards to the generation of school-aged children. These impacts are separated by school level and dwelling unit type. Recognizing single-family dwellings, for instance, generate different impacts at the elementary school level than multifamily units, for example. In the center of the table, you have the rates proposed by this amendment, this proposed amendment, rather. These figures are the result of demographic analysis conducted by the city's consultant as a part of the facilities needs and assessment. In general, these figures do not substantially change. With the exception of elementary students generated by multifamily development, no column changes greater than two percent. In this case, elementary students generated by multifamily development does decrease by nine percent. A component that will be impacted by the proposed amendment is the utilization of a table staff currently uses to allow applicants to provide bedroom count information that further narrows the housing spectrum, housing type spectrum that allows for a better understanding of its impacts. For example, generation rates for multifamily units of zero to one-bedroom units would generate students across all school levels at a much lower rate than single-family detached homes with five or more bedrooms. The table, this table will be eliminated as a part of this amendment. However, the proposed amendment does recognize the benefit of this table, and as a result, the new generation figures, as noted on this table here, will only apply to dwellings consisting of two or more bedrooms. The second component of this amendment is a modification to the levels of service standards used to establish capacities at our schools by level. Like our student generation rates, this information was updated in twenty eighteen, and it was updated utilizing the most recently constructed schools at each level based upon the school's utilized capacity. As such, Florence Bowser Elementary, Colonel Fred Cherry Middle, and Kings Fork High School were used to establish these baselines. Since, the commission study has provided additional data to include the Virginia Department of Education standards for capacity based on variations in school size. For example, a high school with a capacity between thirteen hundred and fifty students and sixteen hundred and fifty students, a level of service that's generally acceptable is a hundred and seventy-five square feet per student. When the capacity increases to greater than sixteen hundred and fifty students, the suggested level of service decreases to a hundred and fifty square feet per student. The expectation here is that the large-capacity schools tend to handle enrollments more efficiently. Using the information outlined in the study, staff averaged out the recommended levels of service, resulting in increases of one square foot at the middle school level and five square feet at the high school level. The most substantial change here is at the elementary school level, where a seventeen-square-foot increase is proposed. This is a result of the utilization of Florence Bowser as the template for the twenty eighteen update. Florence Bowser is an outlier, as it was designed with a capacity of a thousand students, which resulted in a lower overall level of service number due to its size. As I noted, the larger schools tend to operate more efficiently, thus decreasing that level of service number. Most elementary schools in the city are planned to accommodate somewhere between five hundred and eight hundred students. So not a part of this amendment, but of real no less significance, is a change in policy to how the city will evaluate impacts to the school system through the advancement of capacity at schools impacted by development. As you are aware, the majority of conditional rezonings we receive for consideration have a component of them where they provide for the advancement of capacity at impacted schools, where a sufficient surplus does not exist. Currently, this means that in order to satisfy the provisions of the city's Adequate Public Facilities Regulation, that at the time of the application, the applicant must satisfactorily mitigate these impacts, generally through voluntary proffers. And that's done by utilizing the generation rates outlined in the UDO and assigning a cost per student. This table serves as an example of how a surplus or deficit is determined currently. Taking this one additional step further, moving forward, while staff will continue to utilize the data at the time of the application to get a firm understanding of its impacts, of development's impact on the school system, moving forward, we'll also evaluate, if needed, reevaluate capacity situations at the time of building permit or certificate of occupancy. This is significant policy change that recognizes circumstances may change between the time of rezoning to the time of construction, which may consist of several years. It will allow staff the opportunity to determine if cash contributions are still required at the time of construction or if there was a change in circumstances that may have become more favorable, in this case, to the developer. Additionally, it is important to note that at the time of reevaluation, committed development is removed from the equation. As at the time of building permit or certificate of occupancy, only the most recent enrollment figures will be utilized to determine these capacities. In this example above, the school is at capacity as the level of service capacity is a thousand students and the enrollment is also a thousand, meaning a surplus does not exist. In evaluating the impacts using our generation rates, ten new students will be generated by this development, meaning that advancement of capacity for these students must be made at the time of building permit or prior to the issuance of certificate of occupancy for the structures. So in summary, two modifications to Section thirty-one, six oh one of the UDR, UDO, are proposed through this amendment. One, the generation rates will be modified to reflect the most current demographic data of the Suffolk school-aged children population. And two, level of service standards will be modified to align with recommendations from the commissioned school study. Not a part of this amendment, but a significant component nonetheless, is the procedural change pertaining to how the city determines whether surplus capacities exist. This will allow staff the opportunity to reevaluate capacities at the time of building permit or certificate of occupancy, the construction of the actual structures. The proposed text amendments shown in Exhibit B of the ordinance attached to this item's staff report and are presented for your favorable consideration with a staff recommendation for approval. The Committee on Ordinances, at their meeting October nineteenth, twenty twenty-one, by a vote of four to zero, passed a motion to forward the proposed amendments to the Planning Commission for consideration with a recommendation that they be approved. That concludes my presentation. I'll be happy to take any questions at the conclusion of the public hearing.
Thank you, Mr. Wine. We're now open to public hearing. Does anyone here like to speak in favor of this request?
Good afternoon, Chairman Singleton, Vice Chairman Rector, members of the Planning Commission. For the record, my name is Tuck Bowie. My business address is forty-seven oh five Columbus Street, Virginia Beach. I'm here today speaking on behalf of the Coastal Virginia Building Industry Association, which was formerly the Tidewater Builders Association. I want to, first of all, thank staff and the members of the Planning Commission who serves on the Committee for Ordinances for allowing us a seat at the table to hear the staff, or the staff reports, have a chance to review the consultants' reports, have a chance to hear comments from the members on the Committee of Ordinances, and then allow us an opportunity to express our concerns and our position on this. So I'm not here this afternoon to speak in favor of or against this text amendment. Obviously, as Mr. Wine has expressed to you, it deals with a couple issues. It deals with the student generation. It deals with the level of service that provides what the square footage per student should be in either an elementary, middle, or high school. And as Mr. Wine also suggested, the policy change that in our estimation is a very favorable result, that it's at the time that you get your, you buy your, not your building permits, but your certificate of occupancy, which is when you pay your proffers, that if conditions change in those schools, then you have an opportunity not to have to pay those proffers. But there are two concerns that I want to bring to the attention of the Planning Commission. These are policy changes that either council or the school board would have to make. Unfortunately, you folks don't get a bite of that apple, but I'd be remiss if I didn't bring it to your attention because if anybody thinks that by approving this text amendment today is going to change the level of service for schools, particularly as it relates to cash proffers, it's not going to do that. Here's our two concerns. How you calculate the school proffers. And it's interesting, and rightfully so, that Mr. Wine used the term voluntary. Well, it may seem like they're voluntary. If you don't do it, you don't get your entitlements approved. It's just quite that simple. But as you all are aware, the way that proffers are calculated, you take the total cost for the school, say it's fifty million dollars, and there are a thousand students that that school, that will occupy that school. You divide that thousand by the fifty million, and your proffer is fifty thousand dollars per student. It doesn't take a rocket scientist to be able to figure out that that's a number that's just intolerable for new residential construction to be able to deal with. When you think that one-third of every real estate tax dollar that's paid to the city goes toward funding schools, new construction is paying that along with this proffer. And that proffer doesn't take into consideration the life cycle of that school. Let's assume that school is going to last for thirty years. It's not the first thousand students that go in there that should be paying for it. That should be spread over a thirty-year life cycle. That's not taken into consideration. So it's an issue that we talked to the Committee on Ordinances about, and as I said, I'd have been remiss if I didn't come here and speak to the entire commission about that. Second issue, again, policy issue, is if you had a chance to read the reports. The report pointed out two issues. First of all, over the last ten years, the school system has experienced a net decrease, I repeat, decrease in enrollment. The second thing the report pointed out is, over the future ten years, the city will only experience an increase of four hundred and seventy-six students. So if that's the case, why not have the school board look at redistricting to deal with, first of all, the lack of enrollment that they've had, and then to deal with future enrollment? The City of Suffolk is at a stage right now where with these kind of statistics, I don't know how the school board justifies building any new schools. And if you're not going to, if they're not willing, and it's not a, politically, it's not the right decision to make, but if they're not going to consider redistricting, you're going to end up with some areas of the city where you can't advance capacity. And even if you can, new development can't afford to pay that high price for a school proffer. You might as well say this, the city is not favorably looking at new residential development in the future. So there's nothing you all can do here. You've provided me a forum and an opportunity to express the concerns of our industry, and I appreciate your time. And I, again, particularly appreciate staff and the members of the Committee on Ordinances to give us a seat at the table to be able to have this discussion. I'm happy to answer any questions you may have. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Bowie. Is there anyone else to speak in favor? Seeing none, are there anyone in opposition? None? Close the public hearing? Commissioners, question, comments, or motion?
As a member of the Committee on Ordinances who's been involved in this thing since it came to us, let me first say that this has been an ongoing problem or an issue for the City of Suffolk for a long time. Virtually every conditional use permit and rezoning request that comes to us that involves the issue of adequate public facilities has called into question the student generation rates and how we generate the necessary proffer to offset any negative impact to the school. You know, just by the fact that it was only twenty eighteen that this was amended previously would indicate to you that this is an ongoing concern and an ongoing issue. And I think the city is correct in trying to be proactive in addressing the issue, not only from the perspective of the city and what is best in terms of growth and how we control that growth, but also in an effort to not shut developers out of the process because without developers, obviously, we don't have any growth. That having been said, we spent a long time on this thing. It's not a perfect process, and I think, as Mr. Bowie correctly pointed out, a lot of the issues that surround this thing and are on the periphery of it are beyond the scope of this body to address. At some point, the school board or whoever is responsible is probably going to have to take a look at the elephant in the room, which is the rezoning, because as the population of the city shifts and changes, schools, some schools are severely overcrowded and other schools are underutilized. And I don't think the correct solution is to build new schools where they're overcrowded when there's a severe underutilization of facilities in other areas. So that having been said, like I said, there's no process that is perfect. I think this is a reasonable compromise, and once again, probably for the time I think this is a reasonable compromise, and once again, probably for the time being, because it was looked at in 2018, and here it is 2021, and I'm sure we'll be looking at it again shortly. I would make a recommendation that we approve this ordinance text amendment and send it on to city council for their review.
Is that a motion?
It is, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Do we have a motion for approval from Commissioner Rector?
My second motion.
My second from Commissioner Edwards. Is discussion of the motion? Mr. Goomins, if you call the roll, please.
Commissioner Creekmore.
Yes.
Commissioner Eberwine.
Yes.
Commissioner Edwards.
Yes.
Commissioner Goodman.
Yes.
Commissioner Staler.
Yes.
Commissioner Rector.
Yes.
Chairman Singleton.
Yes.
Motion passes by a vote of seven to zero, sir.
Thank you. From Mr. Bowie, you can come back on December 15 and make your voice heard again, sir. And that's this item, the text, ordinance text amendment will go to city council on December 15. Moving on, we've finished that close of our public hearing. Do we have any old business that need to come to the table? Hearing none, we got Mr. Goomins, you have any new business? No? What about the status reports?
Status reports.
I'm sorry. The status reports, status reports, thank you.
All right. At the October 20 city council meeting, two matters were considered. The first was conditional use permit request, CUP 2021-017. This was the West Washington Street Hookah Bar and Lounge. That was approved with conditions as recommended. Conversation at that meeting, as it was at this meeting, I believe, mainly focused around the hours of operation. The second matter, comprehensive plan amendment, CPA 2021-001. This was the amendment to the downtown master plan, which is a component to the comprehensive plan, specifically dealing with the relocation of the festival event space to, from behind the courthouse parking lot to the property that was recently acquired by the city at the corner of Saratoga and West Washington Street. That was the main purpose behind that. There were other modifications. That also was approved. That concludes my report, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Goomins. Commissioner comments, to those of you who know that Mr. Goomins will be leaving the city on the 30th, I think this is his last week of working, and next week he'll be off to retirement. And I'm going to lead it off and open up for public comments, and we're going to have a slight repass after in the chambers to give our personal comments to Mr. Goomins. Mr. Goomins, you've been here since I've, you were here before I got here, and your input has always been positive for the city. You were here when we were creating, massaging that UDO, the infamous UDO, and a lot of work went into that. And you were very helpful in the community meetings, and I went to a few of them, and you were there, you know, being able to answer questions for the public. I just want to say thanks for all your efforts and your time you spent with the city, and from this individual, you will be missed. That's all I have. Thank you. Commissioners?
Thank you for those kind words. I appreciate it.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to echo those thoughts. This is my second time being on the planning commission, and I know that you were here the first time around when Scott Mills was our director of planning. And from having been through the number of presentations and conditional use permit requests and exception request and zoning request and everything else, to keep this herd of buffalo, you know, kind of securely on the prairie is not an easy job. And I think it's a, you know, positive, very positive comment to you, who leads the staff, and how well organized all of our presentations are, and how, once it gets to this level, how little controversy there is about the process. Sometimes people are not always happy with what's being presented, and they're not happy with the outcome. But I don't think anybody can fault the research in the development of the presentations that come before us. So for that, I want to thank you, because you've made our job up here infinitely easier.
Thank you. I'll just pass that credit on to the staff. They make the director's job very easy. Thank you.
Well, I guess I join in. I like to say this. You know, one of my first meetings when I joined the commission, I was invited to Mr. Goomins' office. And at that time, I was about 10, 12 years younger, about 70 pounds lighter, you know? And I was very nervous, and this was all new to me. And Mr. Goomins sat me down, and he went over the pros and cons of things, this is how this works, this is how that works. And he helped massage and make me feel more comfortable. And one of the things that the public does not get to see is Mr. Goomins at his absolute best, and that's at the ordinance meetings. And a lot of times at those meetings, sometimes it's upstairs, sometimes it's downstairs, in those meetings, sometimes we ask questions that are not quite developed, I say it that way. And Mr. Goomins has a way of taking whatever you say and translating it into a way that makes sense, without being rude, without being, you know, arrogant. He just has a way of taking what you say and making sense of it, and then give you the options without telling you, do this or do that. And, you know, I really appreciate it, because in his responses, you learn so much more about what you just asked. And he, kind of in that Bill Clinton kind of way, he kind of says, now, this is the question you should have asked. And we appreciate it. And I want to say this, too. Since I've been on, we've had two changes. And Mr. Goomins has always been here to kind of steady that ship that we have never been lacking, even those times we did not have a permanent director. Mr. Goomins has always stepped in and kept the ship floating. And your invisible hand will be missed, and your wisdom will be missed. And thank you for helping me develop the right questions to ask. I don't know if I always succeed.
Thank you, Mr. Edwards. Staler?
I'd just like to echo everything that's been said. I always looked at Bob as somebody that that knew all of the hidden stuff that's in the UDO that we can dig through, and I just went through the updates, just went through updating all that stuff. And I'm sitting there going, how would anybody in their right mind be able to keep up with all of this stuff in the UDO? And quite frankly, you're the source. You're the guy that breaks it down, as Johnny said. You make it so that it's much more understandable for us pure citizens. So thank you for the great job you've done. We're going to miss you.
Thank you again. Appreciate it.
Go to Mr. Goodman.
Been a pleasure here.
On this side, then we go to this side.
Well, I can say, this is my first year, but it's been a pleasure getting to know, sadly apologizing that I won't get to know more about you and the wisdom that you have. I wish you great success in your endeavors as you go forward.
Thank you, Mr. Goodman.
Thank you. Hope we've broken you in pretty well.
I'd just like to say thank you as well for what you've done. I've been on here for five, gone on five years now, and you have helped me a lot, hold my hand sometimes on some things that I didn't quite know. Again, thank you so much, and enjoy your retirement.
Guess it's my turn.
Last but not least.
I'd like to to thank Bob for the impression that I've had, and I've only been here on this on this commission for about three years now. But his impression that he's left me with is that he's the glue that's held the planning department and the planning effort for Suffolk together over a number of years. And I was, I was reminded, I don't know if any of you all saw this old movie called Stripes, he was a big toe of this organization. So if you don't know what I'm talking about, you need to go to go to see that movie. But Bob has, has, at least in terms of our service on on this commission, has been a great help to us in being able to have the staff prepare these presentations. It's eliminated a lot of questions on the part of someone who is who's here once a month. You guys are here every day, and we all appreciate your efforts, Bob, in being able to make it a lot smoother for us to be able to make any sort of decision at all. So best of luck to you in the future.
Thank you. Appreciate that.
Thank you, Mr. Creekmore. If there's no other comments, no second thoughts? John?
I just want to wish everybody next week a happy Thanksgiving. If you're traveling, be safe. If you're staying home, enjoy your time at home. And happy Thanksgiving. We have a lot to be thankful for in this country.
I got one thing to say, please. I know a lot of you guys realize my mother passed away this past week, and I just want to thank all my colleagues for reaching out with cards. A very beautiful plant was sent to our family. Again, thank you for keeping us in your thoughts during these hard, tough times. Thank you.
If there's no other comments, we will adjourn.